We're gonna call this the meeting to order. It's the October twenty, twenty twenty-two regular board meeting. The first item is a roll call. Phil, if you could do a roll call.
Trustee Hallwax.
Here.
Trustee Listner.
Here.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Here.
Trustee Underdunk.
Here.
Trustee Ruben.
Here.
Trustee Vrie.
And I'm here.
And you are.
So we have a quorum. We are live streaming this meeting and have posted the links of the livestream on the Village's social media pages. We'll make the recording available on the Village's YouTube channel following the conclusion of tonight's meeting. The first item on the agenda is consideration of minutes. We have a series of minutes. The Board of Trustees Committee of the Whole for August eighteenth. The Board of Trustees Committee of the Whole for September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. The Board of Trustees Committee of the Whole for September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. And the Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. The minutes have been circulated to everyone. Are there any comments on the minutes in any respect? And if not, is there a motion to approve them? Is there a second? We can do this by voice vote. All in favor? The motion carries and the minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is public comment. I see we have a huge crowd of people with, who wanna talk about other things. This portion of the meeting allows for those in attendance to address the board regarding non-agenda items. I'll ask that public comments on agenda items be made when we get to that item on the agenda. All comments should be limited to three minutes and either the village manager or I will notify the speaker when their time is up. Are there any non-agenda comments from the public? I don't see any. So that takes us to the next item on the agenda, which is the report of committees. And the first committee is the Committee of the Whole. We had a special Committee of the Whole meeting on Tuesday, the eighteenth. The focus of that meeting was the possible improvements of the golf course in Golf Club Building. We got a report from our professionals, from Stella Nanos and from a member, a number of members of the Friends of Glencoe Golf Club, who are trying to formulate a plan for the clubhouse and have been raising a lot of money. We had a big crowd, a lot bigger than this one, interested in the potential development of the clubhouse and how we would pay for it. After a discussion of the public, we had a discussion among the board members sitting as Committee of the Whole. We talked about three different sort of options for the Golf Club. One of them was to, you know, do nothing, change it into condos. That didn't get a lot of support. Another one was sort of a smaller version. The clubhouse is collapsing, so another one was a more modest, sort of, sort of, quick and dirty build of a clubhouse. That would be way more expensive than we would like, but it wouldn't accomplish that much. Then the final thing was to do a clubhouse that we sort of would want. None of these are inexpensive. And the board ended up directing staff to work on putting together a bond issue in the very substantial amount of fifteen million dollars as we work forward on a plan to pay for the kind of building and golf club we would like. I think ultimately, as we get more information, the plan will be for the board to vote on September fifteenth. Excuse me, December fifteenth. And we'll have, the idea would be to put this up for referendum so the citizens of the village can decide, 'cause we have to do something. The citizens of the village would decide at, in an April referendum, when we have the election in April. We're not done. And even when we put it to a vote by the village board and then ultimately by the citizens, we're gonna keep working on this to make this the best thing we can for the village of Glencoe and its extremely successful and lovely golf club. That's the report of the Committee of the Whole, excuse me, the report of the special Committee of the Whole on golf club. The next item on the agenda is the Finance Committee. Normally, the chairman, Trustee Vrie, would report, but he's not here this evening, so I'll ask Trustee Ruben to report on the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Yeah, Tuesday's the Finance Committee. We need to discuss the monthly financial reports for the month of September. As of September, the general revenue costs is forming, places, heating tags, infant taxes, building permits, all outperformance of the current targets. By the other hand, total revenues are ten percent less than they were last year because real estate tax bills are being set out so late by county. And so that was a way of seeing those costs. And there's spending, we're also a full budget, more funding, more budgets. And we have some hurdles, so the situation of the can, but that also speaks to the motion of the committee, talking about our policy of what level we deserve the cooperation we have with the community, that we've got to pass, that we want to improve the situation of the county, what we continue to be having right here. We spoke about the progress of this year's capital projects and the unfortunate, which we're just getting into for looking at not just in twenty twenty-three, but really twenty twenty-seven. And thinking about all the issues that are facing us, the village, as they're facing everyone, and what that means for our budget, the inflation, supply chain disruptions, dealing with our planned capital expenditure that we need to make, the possibilities of debt financing, material capital debt. We also talked about the upcoming property tax revenue settlement next year, which will be presented to public, or will use that comment by the public, and our next month's vote coordinated on September eighteen. Finally, we talked about the sponsorship program, in accordance with the village's donation policy, which we hope will help offset the cost of what was to be, I don't know, annual lights.
Thank you. Okay, the next report is the Plan Commission, and I'll ask Trustee Listner to report on the Plan Commission. Of course, there's a lot of planning going on now.
There is. We're definitely, we're definitely, so in September, we had a new law signed, which includes ownership and property protection. That's part of our renovation, the capital evaluation. Then we moved on to the comprehensive plan, and Tessa and I presented some current demographic information, two commissioners, some projections, a lot of discussion about those projections on the different reports that we had, that we were getting a base on, for this kind of plan. On October third, Saturday, we had Tessa and some of the staff, how we thought that was possible. On, for, and it's always Glencoe, Alton, Glencoe, and Fort Worth, and so on, across that. So passerby, bookers, providing that, and the tiered file, and all of the village. And it was bookers that many of the students, that the residents, will have, or come to this process. The village also launched their website, which is W W W dot com, which is the website for the plan, for the company's plan. It includes those starter polls, some things for activities, and how that can happen. So we encourage everybody to go to that website and see all the different items that are on the back. And that is part of the company's plan process. The commissioners will be reading the criteria for the commission's review, to provide background information about what the competition process is, and also this can lead to some discussions. We see that going behind the community division development process. So there's a lot going on with that, there's a upcoming meeting this month.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Report on the Golf Advisory Committee, and I'll ask Trustee Hallwax to do that, and also, to the extent you think you should add to what I said about the special meeting.
Yeah.
Please do.
The Gulf Project, Monday, Monday, in terms of the, of course, the November was off, a wonderful, wonderful, the other balance of silver budget, obviously, partly in golf or whatever, so we hope that we can see when I started to solve a certain draft. For some information about how that's, how that's coming about, the biggest revenue driver was weekly, Stella noted, how much the local high schools raised in the course of taking the people. Of course, there's a RFP for a new restaurant operator, and it's challenging, challenging things for people using the existing service. The current vendor is submitting a bid, and we don't have any other bids as of yet. And we spent time on the twenty twenty budget, the rates, the revenue, the expense, the payroll, given the amount of demand, and some of the other, some of the other factors that we're seeing play, and other people working on the records, which I think will increase. My personal opinion, probably, is to do, but certainly will serve. The next meeting, the group is November twenty-first. I think, per, per the present growing, and starting on my ad set, we looked at several different options for, for a comprehensive building, and I think, meaning they're physically robust, you can see the current state of what, what is standing or still standing in the present, as of right now, and like, tonight, if people got to see the structure and it's, and it's, it's a very challenged state. And I think that there was a strong support from the community, where I did see, remember the colony, when it showed up, there was a track, and stuff, it was a positive, positive sign, kind of like when people showed up here, being in the against the marijuana zoning, I didn't see that, that we came out to support.
Thank you. Okay, the next report is Sustainability Task Force. Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes, thank you. Before I report on, a quick question for the Golf Committee. It's often referred to as, this initiative is often referred to as a clubhouse, but it's my understanding that there are several capital projects tied into that referendum, including parking lot, et cetera. Is that, is my understanding correct? Yeah, I might just recommend that for the clarity of this issue. We don't, we don't necessarily lump that altogether. Those could be separate, independent decisions, by investing in the parking lot versus the clubhouse and mixing those, those monies.
Well, we're gonna, you know, I think there's only gonna be one bond issue. Sort of, it's, and what, you know, the amount they were talking about at the meeting was substantial, it's fifty million. I think, I don't know that we'll be able, as far as I understand it, I don't think they're gonna be able to, like, separate it into separate bond issues for pieces of this. We have to do this.
I mean, the referendum will be for bond authority, not bond issue.
That's right, that's right. Yes, we're not, we don't have to actually do it, but we need authority to do it.
What Trustee Mulvaney is saying is, is possible. If you receive the authority through the referendum, then you can determine whether to issue bonds in, in smaller amounts, up to the max for which you've received authority.
Yeah, and we should be clear, you know, we hope the Friends of the, the Friends Group is trying to raise as much money as they can. And depending on how much they raise, and how much the Golf Club is making and whatever, we might be able to ultimately borrow less.
Yeah, so my, my sort of secondary point there is that, you're, you're associating the parking lot costs to the building. Makes a fifteen million dollar building when maybe it's a ten million dollar, don't get it five million dollar parking lot, or whatever the numbers are. That's my only reference, just, just as a branding and refer, you know, as people, as we socialize this idea. Putting that out, that's all.
Okay.
Sustainability Task Force, yes, of course, hard at work, making Glencoe the most desirable and sustainable community in the galaxy. Every day, we get a little bit closer. There is some competition out there, but we are working hard. Two things that I wanted to bring up is recently, the task force has had some teams looking at the waste, so they're opening the garbage bins in front of your homes that you roll out each week, and exploring to see compliance, and they have been leaving behind a message, a little flyer on your golf cart, as, "Thank you very much, doing things great," or, "Oops, there are some things in here that you shouldn't be placing in the recycle bin," right? So they're, they are not digging through anybody's trash, but simply lifting the lid and looking to see if they notice anything that should not be in the recycle bin, leaving an information flyer. I personally have heard this happened in my neighborhood. They're doing it in the so-called presidential streets of Glencoe. Some of my neighbors who didn't know that I had anything to do with anything, and one, one said some very offensive things about this happening, people rummaging through their stuff and looking in their trash and leaving a note, and others who were really impressed that Glencoe was taking on this initiative to help clean our waste streams and improve the recycling. So of course, we all should know that, you know, a contamination in the recycling side will reject a large volume, and oftentimes, the entire container. The most common offense has been the small bag, so people placing their recyclables in a, like, you know, standard grocery plastic bag. Those standard grocery plastic bags are non-recyclable. Everything, the bag and everything in it, comes out and goes to landfill. That's the, that's the biggest mistake. That was observed by the field study. So, public education, is that what they call it? Public, public announcement of, you know, don't put your recyclables in, in a non-recyclable bag, like the typical grocery bags. The other thing I wanna remind folks is the, we talked before about the little bag tags, those little plastic squares that you put on your, your bread, when you buy bread, the little, small plastic tag. I don't know what it's called, I'm sure it has a name. And we are collecting those. I encourage everybody to collect them. I think a few weeks, a few months back, I've asked if the village would put a little container out so that people can bring and consolidate their little bag tags. I don't know if that's happening, I hope so. In our house, we've got a little, we're ready. We've got a little container that's filled with these things, we're made to unload them. The point is not necessarily to pull those out of the stream, those are non-recyclable, by the way. It's not about the little bag tag, but those little bag tags, the organization, the Sustainability Task Force is converting those through an organization into a fundraiser for, for wheelchairs. So it, one, removes it from the improper recycling stream, obviously. I mean, if you collect these things for a year, you might have, like, you know, a little tiny, it's not about the volume of that plastic, although it is a contaminant, but rather awareness, engagement. We have students doing this, we want family members to be doing this, we want it to be a conversation, so I hope that the village has got a little thing out. I'll be coming by, or my wife will soon, to, to do this, to, to ask you guys to, to receive them. So I hope there's a place for that. Otherwise, that's the, that's my report. I'm happy to take questions, I'm happy to see everybody at our meetings, and I'm happy to see volunteers from this room, everybody here, welcome to Sustainability Task Force, and jump in, we've got plenty of other initiatives, which I usually report on, but I will not since I went long. Thank you very much, bye.
Thanks for that report. The next report is the Council for Inclusion in Community. We're gonna come back to Trustee Ruben.
Thank you. Emily, myself, our family services, serves in Glencoe, excellent presentation by the research discussion, and mental health, from a deep vicinity perspective in our community, but also about the vulnerability of the mental health first aid training, by standing first aid training, personal experience, and mental health, and sure, the same, as we see a lot, in, in pretty good, just, yeah, our, our council, trying to find a date, to go together with the group, and, 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 and,
and, um, um, other procedural, uh, improvements. Uh, we will continue to discuss and refine the recommendations, uh, over the fut- over future months. Uh, there are a couple of special studies underway, uh, for that. Uh, we will, uh, be meeting with, um, the planner from Hinsdale to talk about their program, which you may have read about in the paper. Um, and also we're trying to determine the status of the contextual design ordinance and, uh, whether there are portions of that that should be, uh, examined and used in the We, uh, of course appreciate the opportunity that the Preservation Commission will have on the comprehensive plan and, uh, we'll be looking forward to meeting with them. Uh, we also took a look at, uh, demolition permits for 399 Woodlawn, uh, 634 Greenleaf, and I believe 165 Franklin. Uh, two of those structures are historically, uh, uh, significant, um, although there's not much we can do to, uh, stop or even delay because they're not landmark properties. Um, it is a cause for concern on the part of the Commission and we'll be looking at how to, uh, maybe better deal with some of those issues in the, in the future. Uh, our next meeting will be on November 8th.
Thank you for that report. Uh, that covers all the reports of our various task forces, uh, councils and commissions. The next item on the agenda is the Report of Officers. The first part of that is the Village Manager's Report. So Village Manager Corrali, take it away.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. I just have a few items, um, that I wanted to share this evening. The first relates to our leaf collection program. Uh, the Village's annual curbside leaf collection program begins this coming Monday, October 24th. We delayed it a little bit this year because of, uh, some warmer weather this month, but it will kick off, uh, next week and it will run, uh, through the early part of December. Uh, there's a great deal of information on the program, including a collection map and other details that are available on our website. Uh, later in the agenda tonight, the Board will consider a contract for, uh, leaf collection services. That's been slightly restructured to include a new service provider for this season. Uh, Dave Mau will walk through that with you a little bit later on. Uh, while there would be a change in providers, there are no changes for our residents and the program would continue as normal. Uh, just one important reminder, when you're raking those leaves to the curb, please leave them on parkway areas rather than raking those leaves into the streets because doing so will clog storm inlets and that does nobody, no one any favors when the rains start to fall. Uh, Halloween is coming up, Monday, October 31st. Trick or treating hours, uh, this year as all, uh, every year will be from four to eight PM. Uh, the annual Chamber of Commerce Halloween Hello event takes place in our downtown from 10 AM to 5 PM on Friday, October 28th. New this year, we will have a Village Halloween, which is a very, uh, cute play on words there. Um, the interior central hallway of the Village Hall will be decorated for Halloween and we're hoping that kids are going to stop by and, uh, say hello to Village staff who I am understanding will be in costume. Um, and I've been told I likewise have to be in costume, so we'll see how that goes.
And that's on the Halloween.
That'll be on Friday.
It's Friday.
That'll be, right, that'll be Friday, the 28th, the Friday before Halloween. So, um, yeah. Trying to get the Village Attorney to stop by in costume, but he has not committed, so.
Monday.
Monday.
He's looking at costume.
We would love it. Um, as a reminder, don't throw those jack-o'-lanterns out, um, or leave them at the curb after Halloween. Uh, the Glencoe Community Garden is partnering with the Village on their fifth annual pumpkin smash composting event, which is on Saturday, November 5th, so the Saturday following Halloween from nine AM to one PM at the Community Garden. Uh, there's more information that we've been sharing on social media and e-news, but we will make sure to have that available. Um, we are in the process, as, uh, Trustee Rubin noted in, uh, his report relative to the Finance Committee, of developing and finalizing the draft budget for, uh, fiscal year 2023, which begins on January 1st. That budget will be presented to the Village Board on Tuesday, November 15th. Um, hopefully everyone has that in their calendars. That'll be in the Finance Committee, but as typical, we invite the whole Board to go through that budget. Um, if we need additional time, we will also forgo the Committee of the Whole on the 17th and, um, continue that Finance Committee discussion of the draft budget on, uh, on Thursday, the 17th. We will post the budget document on the Village's website on Wednesday, the 9th, and I hope, um, residents in the community will take time to review it. It's an extensive document, uh, of about 300 pages, a lot of interesting information and, um, very helpful to understand the, um, the funding priorities that the, the Village has. And, uh, so we'll look forward to a dynamic discussion with the Board on the 15th and 17th if needed. Um, any feedback that we get from the Board will be integrated into the budget before the December 15th Board Meeting, at which time the Board will be asked to consider its approval along with a series of other, um, documents that are approved along with the budget. So, look forward to that coming up in a few weeks. Um, we are also, I just wanted to make mention, uh, we'll be seeking some Board feedback next month on, um, uh, our, uh, community survey process that, uh, is, we're ready to do again. It's hard to believe we're coming up on the fourth anniversary of, uh, the last community survey. A lot has changed since 2019, um, and we are looking forward to kicking off that process, um, trying to integrate some things relative to our comprehensive plan, integrate some things relative to, um, just our programmatic areas and, uh, to get a, a sense of the, uh, concerns or the, the things that the community likes that we're doing. Um, this will be our third community survey in, um, uh, eight years, so this will be a good predictor, hopefully, of, of the direction that we may need to point as we get set for, uh, comprehensive, excuse me, for strategic planning in 2023. Last but not least, we are, um, I'm pleased to report that the Village, along with the Historical Society and the Glencoe Park District, has been awarded the Frank Lloyd Wright Building Conservancy's Wright Spirit Award, uh, in the public category. Along with the individual commitment of each of the three recipients, the award recognizes the team effort that was necessary to achieve a successful outcome in saving the Booth Cottage, which was relocated to Park District property at Ravine Bluffs Park, uh, back in 2020. Uh, the exterior restoration of the cottage has been completed and the Historical Society will be operating that as, um, a satellite to its downtown, uh, museum. Uh, so the award is being presented this weekend as a part of the Conservancy's Annual Conference, and I will be headed downtown, uh, to receive that on behalf of the Village and we will display that proudly here in Village Hall. It really was a, uh, a community effort. Those of you who were on the Board at the time will remember, uh, that got started just as COVID was kicking off and, uh, the, the, the process took place during, uh, the COVID pandemic, uh, which added further intrigue, but, uh, a really great, uh, really great community project and, uh, it's nice to be recognized. So, wanted to make sure to mention that. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Congratulations to everybody who worked, uh, so hard. I guess we're lucky it was mostly an outside project.
It was, yes, that's true. Thanks.
Okay, that takes care of the Village Manager's Report. Uh, the Village President's Report, there are a couple proclamations. First, consideration of a proclamation and the, uh, consideration of a proclamation declaring October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. The proclamation has been posted online, so it's available, so I'm not going to read it, but I will ask, uh, Michelle Nippmeyer and Amy Gutierrez, uh, to come up and present, uh, for that, and if I butchered your name, please fix it.
You might be the first person to ever get it correct, so please take credit for that.
If your name is Rowan spelled the way mine is, you want to work hard to get it right.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay, I'm getting over a cold, so I will try to project. Um, good evening and thank you so much for including me tonight. My name is Michelle Nippmeyer, as you said, and I am the social worker for the Domestic Violence Law Practice at North Suburban Legal Aid Clinic. North Suburban Legal Aid Clinic provides free legal services in the areas of domestic violence, immigration, and housing, and we are so grateful for our partnership with the Village of Glencoe to provide services to survivors of domestic violence. Thank you, Glencoe, for rededicating each and every year to not look away from the insidiousness of domestic violence in the suburbs. Abusers bring victims here specifically to isolate them from public transportation, their indigenous language community, employment opportunities, and the close and seemingly more abundant resources of the city. But the spotlight that Glencoe shines is a beacon for survivors. This year I would like to speak on another topic, both inextricably linked to domestic violence and personal to us as a Highland Park-based organization with many of our staff present at the July 4th parade, gun violence. Seventy-three percent or more of mass shootings begin with domestic violence. The relationship between domestic violence and gun violence is undeniable and there is no daylight between them. They are mutual epidemics whose inherent connection we cannot ignore. Unfortunately, we have generous empirical data that confirms that mass shooting, I'm so sorry, mass shooters begin as domestic violence victims before becoming perpetrators and then shooters. Violence is a learned behavior. Hatred is taught, and domestic violence is present in Glencoe in greater numbers than we would realize. It does not discriminate between race, gender, socioeconomic status, or religion. It is here and it needs our attention. So what can we do? Create safe spaces for people you know and people you meet to tell you that they are in abusive relationships. Actively listen when someone says that their partner controls who they talk to or when they can leave the house. Learn the domestic violence hand signal, which is this, by the way, and what to do when you see it. Learn about the abundant resources right here in this community, like our clinic, the North Suburban Legal Aid Clinic, which was founded seven years ago because, among other things, there was such a need in Highland Park and Highwood for domestic violence legal services. Rededicate yourself to talking to your children about healthy relationships, about consent, and about self-worth. By addressing domestic violence, we address gun violence. We can do this together. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you very much for that eloquent and informative report, which I'm sorry, we, you know, it's a problem we have to address. I want to thank both of you and your organization for all that you do for everybody that's confronted with this scourge and its side effects. The motion, um, the, the proclamation has, has been circulated. Is there a motion to approve it? Is there, has it been moved and seconded? Um, I think we are, can we have a voice vote on this one? All right, let's have, all in favor.
Aye.
The motion carries. Uh, thank you very much for everything you're, you're doing and thank you for coming in And this is the, this is the proclamation. We are proud to be able to do this. The next item on the agenda is consideration of a proclamation declaring November 2022 as Diabetes Awareness Month. Um, often Trustee Vrie speaks on that. He's not here, so, uh, the proclamation has been circulated and published, but I'll ask our Village Manager to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you, President Rowan, and, uh, I am, uh, speaking a bit as a proxy for Trustee Vrie, who, uh, serves on the Board, uh, here at the, the Chicago chapter of, uh, the Juvenile Diabetes Research Fund, which is known as JDRF. Um, Mimi Crabtree, who is the Executive Director, unfortunately is out of town, uh, this week and was able, was unable to join as well, but, uh, this is a proclamation that the, the Board has considered now for a few years, and, um, I will say, uh, it is one that, uh, rings particularly, um, close to my heart as an individual who lives with, uh, type one diabetes. Uh, diabetes impacts about 34 million people in the United States. Uh, type one, uh, accounts for about 1.45 million of those. Um, the reason Trustee Vrie has been so involved in JDRF himself is because that is, because his son, his youngest son Emmett, was diagnosed about three years ago, uh, and they have, uh, he and his wife have really taken an advocacy role. Uh, I've worked, uh, and lived with, uh, diabetes myself for about 16 years, and I will tell you the work that is being done to find, uh, both clinical cures and, uh, mechanical ones to make life, uh, less complicated, uh, is truly amazing, and, um, November is a great month to understand, learn more, find out about diabetes. Um, there are a lot of folks in our community who are living with it, uh, a lot of folks who are managing it on a day-to-day basis, and, uh, if you see a lot of people wearing blue in the month of November, it's because blue is, um, the color that, that we wear for the month of November to bring more attention to diabetes and diabetes treatments. So, uh, just wanted to make a couple of comments relative to it and, uh, and thank the Board for its continued support of me and Trustee Vrie's family and all of us, uh, in this community and elsewhere who are, uh, were living with it.
Uh, thank you very much. The proclamation has been circulated. Is there a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, I think we can have a voice vote, all in favor.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
Um, uh, next, um, we have, uh, three appointments to, uh, some of our Boards and Commissions. The, uh, can I do these all at once? Okay. Uh, we have an appointment of, uh, Jamie Fishman to the Sustainability Task Force for a term expiring in May 2025. Reappointment of Linda Lynn to the Sustainability Task Force for a term also expiring in May 2025. And reapportment of Georgia Mahopolis to the Plan Commission for a term expiring in May 2026. Um, we thank, you know, I, I, let me just say, uh, I think we thank all of them for, uh, in, in two cases, for their service and for their agreeing to continue to serve and to, uh, Mr. Fishman for agreeing to serve for the first time. Um, is there a motion to approve these appointments?
Some, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded and we need a roll call for this.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Onderdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Motion carries and so these three folks are reappointed or appointed, as the case may be. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. The content, Consent Agenda includes items that were published online for the community to review. They've already been reviewed by the Board. We don't think that they warrant any additional discussion, uh, but if anyone disagrees, uh, feel free to raise it. Um, the, the Consent Agenda and the backup for it, it has, like, it's been published. I don't think I need to read the list. Um, so, are, if there aren't any questions or further discussion on the Consent Agenda, is there a mo- motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Can I, real quick, perhaps, uh, Village Manager Corrali, given the amount of people that actually care about, um, garbage, is there a way to, or item G, just to give a very quick line about what exactly is happening? Sure, yeah. So, um, the current agreement with, uh, Lake Shore Recycling Service, um, who is our, uh, solid waste and recycling, um, service provider in the Village expires at the end of October. Uh, we have been working with LRS on a successor agreement. Uh, we had come back to the Board and talked about that earlier this year. Uh, we are finalizing that successor agreement and, um, along the lines of wanting to line it up with our new fiscal year, which, um, we now, uh, are, are working to align many of our contracts onto a January 1 fiscal, uh, we are seeking a two-month extension of the current agreement. All of the current, uh, fee structures will remain the same, um, while, uh, we finalize the agreement and you will see, uh, that updated agreement, uh, which was a, I believe, a three-year agreement, um, which would commence January 1st. That'll be on your November 17th Board Agenda for consideration, and we'll do a full presentation on it then.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent, or, or, have we, has that moved and seconded already? Maybe it is. Okay. Is there a motion to, uh, approve the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we should have a roll call on this.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Onderdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Motion carries, thank you. The next item in our regular business and the first item of regular business is consideration of a resolution authorizing the Village Manager to execute an amended license agreement and construction access permit with the Forest Preserve District of Cook County for the 2022 lagoon transmission water main replacement for a total cost not to exceed $157,000, and I'll ask our Public Works Director to present on this. Mr. Mau.
Very good, thank you, uh, Mr. President, members of the Board. Uh, we've talked a lot about this, uh, lagoon transmission main the last, uh, the last three years. Uh, just to review briefly, the, um, the lagoon main was installed, that transmission main was installed in the early 1930s at the same time that the elevated tank was constructed west of the Eden's Expressway. That pipe was upgraded in the 1980s by pulling a liner through it. Uh, as you're well aware, we've had issues with the performance of that liner. Uh, in subsequent, uh, years in 2020 and 2021, we've replaced segments of it, and this year's budget included, uh, funding to replace the remaining 2,500 feet of that pipe. Uh, at the time, we brought a contract award to the Board in July. We were, we were continuing to, uh, be in discussions with the Forest Preserve District on permitting, the license agreement and the permitting for that work. The, the Forest Preserve requires a license agreement, uh, essentially for the easement within their property to, to contain, uh, a utility like our water main. Uh, that water, that existing license agreement from 1980, their 10-year agreements had expired and, uh, had never been renewed by them or, or inquired by us, and so, when we, when we brought the, the first phase and what, what was in your packet or what's up on the screen, hopefully, hopefully at least outlines the three phases, we brought the first phase to, to them for consideration in 2020. Because the new pipe was going to be laid outside of that easement area, we had to, we had to secure a new license agreement, and that was done and paid for in, in 2020. Last year, the segment in green here, which was the second phase, uh, was within the license agreement area and we thought, uh, and, and they did at the time as well, that all we would need was a construction access permit, which we, which we, uh, applied for, received, and that work was completed. So when we went to the district this year to talk about the third and final phase, their review determined that it would, it would be best to replace the, the, uh, the expired 20, uh, 1980 license agreement with a, with a new license agreement that would address this, this water main in its entirety, so all three phases. And so what, what they suggested would, would be an amendment to the license agreement from 2020, and so that, so that all of the pipe would be within the same license agreement and all phases would renew at the same time at a future date. So the license agreement fees are calculated based on a, a cost per current, a current cost per acre, uh, as set by the Forest Preserve District Board. So the total fee, after doing the math, the total fee for this amended license agreement for the Village's 16-inch, uh, water main, uh, including program and application fees is $120,000. In addition, the Forest Preserve requires a construction access permit for any land area outside of the license agreement that we need to use to access to do the work. So that, we're estimating that fee to be about $12,000, and then one of those access paths is going to be over an existing bike path, and so we've suggested, um, authorization for a 20, up to a $25,000 allowance for restoration of that bike path should we need to. So all total, the, the amended license agreement, construction access permit and restoration fees is approximately $157,000. So before you tonight is, is request to authorize the manager to execute this amended license agreement and construction access permit with the Forest Preserve District of Cook County for a total cost not to exceed $157,000. Just as, just by way of update, um, we are, uh, uh, as a matter of fact, we are walking the project site tomorrow morning with Forest Preserve in preparation for, for beginning construction on the 1st of November. So this, the timing is, is, uh, is important to get this approved, get, get checks over to the Forest Preserve and, and be ready to, to proceed, that, where we expect to be about five weeks of construction. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I, I only have one question. It, it obviously makes sense to sort of put everything together instead of having it in pieces. Are we paying anything extra because we have a larger amount that's covered because we're putting everything together, or is that going to eventually even out?
They, uh, if I understand your question, no, it's, it's a flat cost per acre of, uh, of the land area, the length of the improvement by 15-foot wide easement, and it's a, their, their current cost, it's an escalating cost every year, current cost is, is $92,000 an acre, so that's, that's how the, the cost is calculated. That's the same rate that applies for license agreements anywhere in the, in the district's territory.
And we're, so, but we're covering more, I mean, we.
Well, they, in their infinite wisdom, we, we are paying a, a catch-up fee for the, for the 2020 agreement and the 2021 agreement that they never requested of us. Uh, so all total, that, that totals the estimated $120,000.
Okay, look, it's clearly something we should do. Anybody else have any questions about this? And if not, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Sir.
Uh, okay, let's have a roll call.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Onderdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Motion carries. Uh, the next item is consideration of a resolution authorizing the Village Manager to execute a one-year contract with Flex Landscaping for Parkway Leaf Collection Services in an amount not to exceed $70,000, and again, I'll turn to our Public Works Director, Mr. Mau.
Yeah, very briefly, and this, and this kind of segues from the, the, the previous conversation about the LRS agreement. The original five-year agreement. The original five-year agreement with LRS in 2017 included an agreement to perform the village's annual fall leaf collection program. The terms of that agreement were, was essentially a partnership between the village and LRS, where LRS supplied the trucks and the labor, and the village provided the leaf vacuum machines. Throughout the course of the first four years of the contract, LRS has provided satisfactory leaf collection services. Over the last couple of years, they've had significant difficulty with staffing the service due to their use of contract labor, and subsequently, the village has had to supplement at times to complete that service each year. This year, with the, both the combination of that ongoing problem and the existing agreement expiring here in mid-October, just at the same time as the leaf program was scheduled to begin, we sought out an additional, we put an RFP on the street in the spring to get pricing for additional options for providing that same service. We received a competitive number from a landscaping contractor. In discussing that with LRS, they had absolutely no issue with us essentially moving that service to an outside contractor, additional contractor this year. The pricing, they did provide a price that will be included in the new three-year agreement that'll come to the board next month, as manager Crowley suggested. So we'll have, this gives us an option going forward, whether we use LRS going forward or continue to contract out to the lowest responsible bidder. Flex Landscaping, very competent landscaper that's performed landscape maintenance, not only for the village but for clients all over the village, and its staff's belief that, I mean, this is the work these crews do all year long, that they're going to be extremely efficient. We expect, for the budget amount we have, we expect to still have to supplement, it'll be a bit of a hybrid program. They will have the initial two to three crews out, and when it gets heavy toward the end of the season, the village will supplement as needed. But by and large, they will have the lion's share of the service, provide the lion's share of the service. Everything else will be the same. It'll look no different to the public. All the leaves collected throughout Glencoe, which typically is 8,000 to 10,000 cubic yards of leaves, will still continue to be delivered to the Botanic Gardens Landscape Waste Site over on Dundee Road. So with that, the recommendation is that the board authorize the manager to execute a one-year contract with Flex Landscaping for a cost not to exceed $20, $70,000.
Seems like, seems excellent, unless there's discussion, is there a motion to approve?
Let's have one quick question.
Sure.
So we had the contract with LRSRI. Is it, my hearing that they just couldn't handle the volume because of some of their staffing? Do we get any kind of abatement on our fee to them that would offset this?
We did not. I mean, it was bid, and interestingly, when we went through a very comprehensive process when we sought proposals for the solid waste agreement in 2017, interestingly, they were the only one of five bids that even submitted a cost for the leaf collection. Most of these waste haulers don't want to touch that kind of program. To answer your question, we have not, we have supplemented, just out of necessity, we have provided supplementary staffing to bring that project to conclusion each season, but we have not, we have not gotten any additional savings back from LRS for that.
So is it fair to say that we understand that this was a complex or a difficult, difficult contract for them because it's staffing and whatnot? So there's no, we don't have any reason to go back and think that we should seek anything?
Not likely. I mean, it's a fair question. I think, I think the model, it was bid as a lump sum item, which was more challenging for them. They, it was pretty clear after year one that they weren't, they weren't making any money on the leaf collection.
Right, okay. Thank you.
I have one question. So you mentioned that with LRS, you were using the village's equipment to suck up leaves. So with this, like, do they have their own equipment?
No, it'll be the same model, and that was how the contract was set up, because we've got the leaf collection, the leaf vacuum trailers that you see running around town, very unique piece of equipment. It's a single use, you know, it sits 10 months of the year. And so when we, even when we built that into our original franchise agreement, RFP, it was with the village supplying the equipment. I think in our hope of hopes, we were hoping we'd even be able to sell that equipment off to somebody that could, you know, carry that banner going forward. That hasn't played out that way, so. And it's an extremely popular service, and it works for a number of reasons, primarily of which is the village's ongoing agreement with Botanic Garden to be able to deposit leaves at their site.
I think we have.
So I have one quick comment. You know, I would really like to see if we, find a way to encourage the operators to wear a mask when they're collecting the leaves. And we've talked about that here in the past, about the importance of the respiration, protecting respiration. A lot of mold, mildew, and dust is stirred up in the process from the machine, coming off the machine. So if we could encourage that, especially if they're using our equipment, and furthermore in the future, if we could put that as part of our specs, that would be great. Thank you.
I think the motion has been moved and seconded.
Trustee Listener moved.
Second.
Now it's been moved and seconded. Sorry. Roll call, please.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Onderdunk. Trustee Rubin.
The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Mao, and it sounds like you have a cold. I hope you get better. The next item on the agenda is consideration of a resolution approving and consenting to the execution of a project funding and reimbursement agreement between the Friends of the Glencoe Golf Club and the Glencoe Golf Club, and authorizing a contract for the construction of a croquet court with golf creations of Merango, Illinois, in amount to exceed, not to exceed $44,600. And I'll ask our Golf Works Director, Stellan Thanos, to present.
Thank you. So this is a court that is going to go in a location that will not be in any way of the construction. It's adjacent to the Pro Shop, adjacent to the First Tee. It is exactly over to croquet, I mean, to chipping greens that currently exist. So we are recycling that whole land. We're stripping the sod and reusing that on the golf course. This company is coming in and doing some leveling, some drainage. They're going to keep our existing irrigation system, so we're doing a lot of recycling here. What they're putting in is essentially a putting green that is perfectly flat. It's the same specs as a putting green. This is all donated money, and it is also a multi-use project, because if it's not being used for croquet, because it is putting green specs, it can be used for golf. So it's a very good project. It's very well supported by friends of the Glencoe Golf Club, and as we have experienced, we have been allowing them to use a portion of the driving range for croquet, and there's been a lot of interest and a lot of new folks coming to the site. So we're excited to get this project started. We can actually start work, once we give them the go-ahead, they'll put us on their schedule. With the majority of the work being done this year, we'll cover the site, and hopefully most of it will settle by next year, and then our staff would complete the project. They will be using our payroll system to log in and charge Friends of the Glencoe Golf Club for all of their labor, including benefits. So Friends will reimburse the Glencoe Golf Club for labor. Any questions?
Seems great. Thank you. If there aren't any questions, is there a motion to approve the...
Some moved.
Let's have a roll call, please.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Onderdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Motion carries, and thank you very much for the presentation. It sounds like a great plan that can be used for two different things. That concludes the agenda for this evening. The next item on the, that concludes the public agenda. The next item on the agenda is a closed session specifically to address collective bargaining. That's 2C2, and I'll ask if there's a motion to go into closed session.
Can I say something real quick, President Rowan? I see Chief Lundowski, I wanted to mention that we had, I had, at our house, we had a kerfuffle with a person that was apparently off, potentially off of her meds. The short version is that we called, my wife called the Glencoe Police there, they're in 60 seconds, which is a blessing compared to, I would say, potentially other villages, and they were absolutely fantastic. Every experience I've had with them was wonderful, but this case was a little bit daunting with my wife and kids at home and a kind of very odd person trying to get into our house. So I just wanted to say thank you. I mentioned it personally, but I wanted to say it again publicly.
That's great, you know.
You did, very good.
Also, wait for Quizzling next month. We have the best public safety department in the world, and we're proud of it. Okay, we have, I think, a motion and a second. Is there then a motion? Okay, second. There we go. Voice vote, all in favor of going into closed session? The motion carries. Thank you, everybody, and I'll go back into public session ultimately to close this